Work session. Up first, we've got the K-1 update, community engagement. Mayor Wilson?
Yes, and I'll invite Jessica. You want to point out? I will tell you that it's listed twice on there. There's just one agenda item, so I think this is going to go by really, really fast unless people have questions. But basically, when we knew we were going to purchase, which by the way, it's going to happen, I think Friday, at, do you know what time?
One o'clock.
One o'clock. We're going to have like a little ceremony at the K-1 Center, so if y'all can make it, please do so. But with today's technology and expertise in gathering collaborative community engagement, the city of Fairhope must always provide a platform for which to share ideas with our citizens and vice versa, especially when it comes to decisions that affect the city What the K-1 Center could become in its second life should come from the people who were purchasing it, the taxpayers. There was a lot of talk before from different interest groups with their ideas, all very good, but there was not a formal process for all to share their ideas to make certain all were being considered. I felt it was critical to set up this process for our community to contribute their ideas and make certain citizens are a part of the process until the end. We were fortunate that Amy Chester with Rebuild by Design was available. She was in town for a resiliency conference, and she was the one that facilitated the initial three-hour engagement meeting here at the Civic Center. And this was followed up with a survey. The engagement process is not finished. This is just going over some high-point ideas. And the point of starting the initial phase was to determine general concepts. So these are not, doesn't have anything to do with the building structure, any of the details. This is just concepts right now. The process will include more community conversations, research, and workshops in order to provide the most innovative plans for the site's future. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Jessica, who is going to go over, well, she has a lot to go over, but the survey is one of them. So, thank you.
Thanks for having me this afternoon, gentlemen. So, you know, the mayor was talking about the forum that we had in April. We called it the Fairhope K-1 Center, What Do You See? Because we really wanted to facilitate this positive, inclusive environment where people didn't feel like their ideas would get, you know, smushed down or taken advantage of. We wanted people to feel like they were definitely part of the process. It was the first step in what we hope will be an extensive community engagement process. We had more than 100 participants that day. So we have more than 100 participants that day, and the discussion was modeled after Rebuild by Design's processes. So the small group table discussions prompted by Amy Chester, they were facilitated by local community members who had gone through some training with us the previous day. Participants were asked to talk about the challenges and strengths and the things they really love about Fairhope. And they were also asked to create individual table vision statements. Those vision statements were then voted on by all participants and kind of whittled down to the top four, if you will. So what you'll see in these slides is that those collective strengths, weaknesses, and loves and vision statements are kind of the basis of what this survey was built on. The survey was, the content design was advised by Rebuild by Design, and Amy Chester, they had an integral part in putting that survey together. So what you see up there is we asked people to vote on their loves. These were the top five loves that came out of that April meeting. And as you can see, without a doubt, small town feel was number one. That was the thing they loved the most about our community. You also see significance of history and walkability, Mobile Bay, cultural and educational opportunities. Some of the comments entered into this survey by residents were that, they were pretty interesting, but everybody said that this is a completely different place from other places. That's what they want to preserve, is that Fairhope is completely different. They also want to preserve the friendliness and cohesiveness that they feel in our community. They see those as major pluses to this city. Overwhelmingly, but not surprisingly, rapid growth was the most challenging our residents, believe we face, followed pretty quickly by environmental stressors. Many comments were left within that survey, speaking to the challenge of growth, with one respondent kind of summarizing all of them by saying, "Too much growth is ruining our beautiful town." There were about 500 people who responded to this, and I would say that a majority of that was, the comments that were left, were by people who said that growth was ruining our town. On the other hand, the least challenging of the options the participants voted on were opportunities for civic engagement and space for performing arts. Other options there, you see, were lack of parking and environmental stressors. We also asked participants to rank four options for what they would like to see on the K-1 site. And interestingly enough, they were evenly split between a space for environmental stewardship and a space for arts and culture. Comments entered into in this section were the most plentiful and were definitely creative, as is Fairhope's signature, with suggestions from everything to open green space and the arts, to environmental research and education, and area for enhanced civic engagement for children, and endless combination use options. So more than anything, this survey, similar to the April meeting, is a representation of a community that desires to work together for a common good and a common purpose. What you see now are vision statements, or you were going to see some vision statements, but for some reason they are not loaded up there. But our vision statements were voted on by our respondents, and they were pretty evenly split between people who want to see civic engagement, a space that is mixed use, that has combined use for civic engagement, and arts, and education, and culture. We have such an advantage with this space in the middle of our central business district. And we know that the K-1 Center evokes memories and nostalgia, but more than that, respondents showed overwhelmingly that the property is full of possibilities, and our citizens see that, full of possibilities, both nostalgic and otherwise, for a more vibrant central business district. We want to thank all the citizens who took the time to let their voices be heard for this.
All right. And we're going to have this also, and more deep, or the whole slide with additional notes?
Yeah, I'm not really sure what happened to the slide, sorry.
With additional notes? Do you want to do the mission statements, or which one failed?
Yeah, we will actually put those out. So we're hoping to put those out on the website tomorrow, just kind of a summary of this, so that residents can see what their fellow residents voted on. They really took the time and the opportunity to do that.
I don't know if it's possible, but I would love to see sort of the raw data that came with this.
Yeah, I would love to be able to provide that to you guys.
Some of the responses that we actually got.
For sure. And they're fascinating. If you, if it works for you guys, I would love to be able to email you, just kind of the raw data from it, so that you see it. It's a lot, but you know what? That's what we need when we're talking about community engagement. Every citizen's voice matters, so...
Is that something we can post to, I mean, on the website?
It may be difficult to do that, but we can definitely look into it. I can speak with Jeff about that.
Okay. Great. That's why I said, you know, I had no idea that this was going to be the only thing on the agenda. Because I see it just when everybody else says it, but you know. Okay. Yeah, I know we have a Harvard Board. Item two. But I can't picture that being too terribly long.
All right. That is item number one and number two?
Yes, it is.
All right. Well, so...
I just have one.
Number three? Come on, guys.
As I said, we appreciate taking one of those out.
Exactly. I mean...
I'm going to speak to this, so you don't have to read it right now, but I thought it's something you could have to look at later. Well, as the agenda item states, what we're, this is Don Bates, who's the newest member of the Harvard Board, and I'm the chairman this year. We had been discussing, and you all have too, the use of the Black Creek property, besides just being a collection of boat wet slips like we've got now. And what we seem to have established is, a lot of people have different ideas about the highest and best use, but none of us really have any specific experience into relating the highest and best use of a marina to what we've got in Fairhope. So the Harvard Board voted last time to ask, to permit me to come ask you all if we could initiate a process to hire a consultant to help us determine what the options would be for the use of the property, and it would give us a list, give you all a list of choices, along with economic benefits and consequences of those choices. But I'd like to make a couple of other remarks, but first, I want to thank the council, and especially Kevin, who sits through our meetings, Lynn Mazer, Tom Cool, and Sean Say, who have up to this point done a really great job on bringing what we've got there now back from almost ruined to usable space. So, but so far, things have gone really well. It's a great piece of property, and I think we can do a lot with it. Don is, he's new to on the Harvard Board, and he's fairly new in Fairhope, but I think he had some comments that he shared with me that I think it'd be interesting for you all to hear on his idea about what we could do.
Sure, sure. Thank you all. Thank you for your time. Yeah, 14 years ago, we got married on the bluffs of Fairhope. My wife said, "Get me to Fairhope." So five years ago, we came to Fairhope, and then Skip has been roping me into things ever since. So anyhow, two years I've had a boat in the marina, and first of all, just amazing what two years has done for that facility. Sean's working super hard, getting the support, and really, even loopers that are coming through have stopped and talked about what a nice place, and why would you not come to Fairhope, while you can shop and do everything else. So as part of this, I guess, a fourth meeting on the board, and we kind of go in the definition of insanity. Let's make it a boatyard, let's land space, I mean, it's just the gamut of ideas. And it's just, it's come up, it's time for the vision going forward. And so as a group, you know, we have a lot of opinions without the experience, and Skip brought the concept, too. Let's get to something as close to apples and apples, not necessarily just a pure cost standpoint, but something that aligns with the long-term vision of Fairhope. And that's what I feel that we're tasked to do if we're going to be an active group, to put that into something that's simple, planable, and we can set future plans with. And so I think what Skip's going to propose really lets us put something that we can put in your hands to help us with that decision, and we can help implement that vision going forward.
I've had conversations with two marina consultants. They both actively operate marinas and shipbuilding facilities, and they're both willing to undertake a consulting look at what we're doing. I've talked more to one guy, Jim Bronstein, who's in Miami, and he responded to, in fact, I met him and visited with him here in Fairhope. He's on the board of Saunders Yacht Works. He sent me back, we talked a little bit about what he might bring to the table in terms of information and experience and suggestions, and then, and we discussed what we can do, the city can do. The city's got some, our departments are capable of doing a lot of stuff and coming up with the cost. I mean, we don't have to hire somebody else to come in and tell us what it costs to do some of this stuff. And they can't tell us what we like best about Fairhope, but they can bring to the table their view of what's worked best in other places. He said that what he thinks he could do for us, further evaluate physical site needs and layout options, including the wet slips and maybe dry storage, evaluate the market and the surrounding competition, which is, I think, a really valuable insight, because both of these guys see what goes on in marine environments all over the East Coast. Determine capital equipment needs to accomplish various things, evaluate the business models, including the boatyard, boat storage, contractor-based repair opportunities, and leasing part of all of it, and evaluate the financial pro forma options about how any of these or a combination of these could benefit the city financially. He said to do those things, more or less, he thinks he could do for about $10,000. My request at this point to you all would be, does it make sense, given that we've got a big facility with a lot of potential and a lot of different potential uses, that we get somebody who's done this before to come give us some suggestions in the neighborhood of $10,000? Now, I know that we've got, I would propose that we write a request for proposal and get it, get not just Jim Bronstein or this guy in North Carolina, but whoever wants to come help us respond to the request for proposal. But I don't want to get into that and involve city employees who've got a lot of other things to do if we just, you know, if you all are not interested, or if you don't agree that this is a good way for us to look at planning for that site. That's what I'm here today to ask, if it does sound like a good way to do it, we're willing to take on the job of doing it with some help from city people who know a lot more about how to put a RFP together than I do. But I think it would really result in some good choices being given us, and the financial results of making those choices. So I would like to get you all to give us the go-ahead to pursue the definition of what we're going to do with the help of somebody that's going to cost us a little bit of money to get the hell.
Comments?
I'll go ahead and mention that the comprehensive land use plan is going to evaluate all assets with the community engagement. So I feel like this is kind of a little bit of a piecemeal in that regard, because it's going to tie in every single one of our city assets, this being a big one, of course. And the teams that will be, you know, having the RFP, they're going to be teams, because it's all-encompassing, and all the experience will be there. Coastal engineering will be a big part of it, just like the one that we're going through right now. And Councilman Conyers is with us on that. We're interviewing teams for the municipal pier, living shoreline project that would start hopefully August, or end of August, we'll be getting those bids back in. So, I mean, I just, when we look at it all-encompassing and all of that experience being here, we're going to have really the top-notch in every category at our disposal. So that's the plan, and that's really for all of our city assets, because we want to have the experience from, you know, engineers, of course, environmentalists, and we'll have all of it.
Well, that sounds great, but I think what we're faced with here is, the city has an asset here, and we don't know exactly what to do with it. And what I'm proposing is that we get some help from people who do this every day for a living. And I can't see, I think it would be a part of what's going to go on, but I can't see any other resource, other than somebody like this, who would respond to an RFP, who could bring the kind of information we need. There are really different uses that can be made of that property, one of which would just be making a park surrounded by wet boat slips.
But I think community engagement does need to be involved as well.
Right, exactly. But I think from your standpoint, you're making decisions based on the highest and best use of an asset, and that highest and best use should consider, does it financially benefit the city, and does it benefit the citizens in Fairhope? The way it's constituted as an asset, are the citizens going to benefit from it, and can the city not make a profit maybe, but can it be self-supporting? And I think somebody who's in that business is best suited to help us, to show us what some of the options are to create the highest and best use.
If I can add to that, Skip. So we're one level below. I'm in the planning world, my past business. So the information that we get would really fit well with the master planning concept that the professionals, you're talking about. It's one level below from a pro forma financial, very specific, down one level, that I think really fits into the process, very specific in the master planning process that you're talking about, that allows, that says, by the way, we actually have some real numbers here, you know, and be specific.
I think that would be good, but like I said, this, it's a $650,000 study. It's 18 months, and the biggest component of it is citizen engagement, and it's going to be very extensive. And I do think that all of our city property needs to be communicated that way before a plan's put together. I mean, that's just how I think.
It sounds like y'all are saying the same thing, y'all are, you know, it sounds like you're saying we want to see this as the financial viability of how to operate the property as it exists, or maybe whether it needs to change something else. You're saying before we figure out what we need to do to get this to what this is and everybody needs to do.
Right, because all of that would be part of it.
This can give, and this is a critical part, that we can actually give a lot more specificity to the citizens with the true option, because there's all these rumors. So I've been dealing with this for a couple of months, and, oh, we're going to get $5,000 a month rent. Well, you talk to anybody with a boatyard, that's the common number you hear out there, and anybody with a boatyard laughs, that you're never going to get $5,000 a month rent, plus tying into people's revenue. So I think this is a discussion item, you know, because we appreciate what you're saying. This, in the planning world, I think this could actually be, for the amount of money for us as a holder board to really get it further along, with the citizen involvement actually seeing the real numbers, because you're going to have a lot of citizens say, "Well, there needs to be an operating boatyard, because we can get $5,000 a month." And that's what we've been doing for two years, that exact thing. I think we can get to, that's not an option, because we know there is nobody that will rent this facility for that amount. And so that's just from what we're dealing with at our level.
But are you saying that you want to study for an entrepreneur, then? Whether or not they can make a business?
No, man. No, no.
I think what we're suggesting is that we get some help in determining what the potential uses are from people who have designed marinas and waterfront property. How are the citizens going to make a decision about what they think's best if they don't know what the options are?
No, and that's why this is part of the options, too. I'm just saying that what we have in the plan is going to accomplish those things, too. So it's up to y'all, if y'all want to do kind of it twice, but...
There's a lot of good effort going. I guess, at the end of the day, is the realistic side of what our current investment. We have two years of more work to do there that may not need to be done if we go a different route with the facility. For $10,000, I think we can have a better understanding of where we're going. If we're talking about dry storage, if that's the vision...
Right now, we're investing in the things to bring it, you know, we haven't finished at all the money that needs to be invested in our seawall, upgrading our boat slips. I mean, there's a lot to do before we even take it to the next phase. The boatyard, I mean, the slips are self-sufficient right now, which is remarkable, just because it's been less than two years. But I agree with you, but you know, in order of priorities, as far as the city, there has to be an order of priorities. It's one thing to do the study, but the money that it will take to do some of these recommendations, you know, you have to look at it in a broader scope.
Yeah, well, I mean, the way I hear this, and the way I'm interpreting it at least, and I'm going to give you all a chance to comment, y'all haven't said anything yet, is, you know, citizen input is obviously going to be part of the land, comprehensive land use study, and that will get a lot of input from citizens of Fairhope as to what they envision or what they'd like to see down there. But it sounds like what you guys are talking about is what is doable down there, or what is viable down there. I mean, you know, I met with a group of eighth-grade SGA students here a couple of months ago, and they insisted that we get a Chick-fil-A in Fairhope, and so I don't know if that's a viable use for down there, but that would probably be the number-one citizen input for a lot of those.
If the kids though.
And so, you know, knowing what we want down there, and then what's viable down there, and what makes sense are two different things, and it sounds like you're talking about one piece and you're talking about another. Maybe yours will include that, too.
And priorities, and priorities, but yeah.
But it sounds like you kind of need both to be able to make a reasoned decision.
Yeah. I think now is the time to develop this kind of information, so it can be put into the pot with the other stuff.
We also need to consider staff's opinions, too.
Sure.
Yeah, I would like to get, you know, me personally, I would say get citizen input first, and staff's opinion about what to do with that property. Take a poll or whatever you need to do to find out what the citizens would like to see down there. And then hire somebody to come in and say, "Here's the best way to do that," rather than paying this $10,000 to this guy to come in and say, "It can be a working boatyard, it can be dry storage, it can be all these other things, and then we get to do the, get the citizens' input, and they say, no, you know, 95% of people would rather see a pavilion park down there where they can go down there and picnic, then we've wasted $10,000." I mean, it's not that much money in the scope of things, but we waste $10,000 in the process of getting this expert's opinion about what to put down there, when that's not what the citizens want.
I guess one point I have, and this might be kind of being nitpicky, but if you went the route of leasing to an operator, I mean, you said Mr. Bronstein is on the board of Saunders, and I mean, they would be a phenomenal operator down there. I would just say, if we were to go that route, let's make sure we don't do anything where we somehow preclude them from being a potential candidate due to conflict of them out.
Okay. Well, I get the impression that you all think we should hold off on this until the citizenship says they want it, they want something different.
I mean, I'd like to move forward, you know, to find out what's the best use, or best use according to the citizens, what they'd like to see down there.
And if I could add, this specifically will not be his opinion on best use. His job is to get this as close to apples-to-apples of cost, long-term cost, maintenance, construction, for all of the options, whether it's a park. We're not looking for his opinion, we're looking for him to use his experience to put this in something that we can all understand and do the long-term cost of all of this, not opinions, and that's the real goal.
Not just operation of a boatyard, but how much it would cost to convert it all to a park, and...
To a park. That's an option. No development. Do we want to have, that the city continues to operate it, and we have a select list of contractors, you know, and what those contractors will willingly pay and the way you deal with those contractors. So it's just the viable options that come out, that other people can see, and it makes sense. That's really what it's about.
We did take out of the budget, and now I'm trying to think of how much it was in the 2019 budget for the upgrades that we need right now, and it's not all of them, but I thought it was like $400,000 that we didn't include. It was in the budget we had to take out. Those are the things that are critical, that need to happen. So that's what I meant by the priorities right now, for the, it's going to cost a lot of money just to do what we need to do to make it a clean marina and sustainable. So hopefully, we can include that in the 2020 budget.
All right. Well, we'll wait to hear that, this comprehensive study.
And I'm happy to talk to you more about this study, so you know that it does include a lot of things.
All right. Go on, George. Thanks, Skip. All right. Item number four is committee updates. Congressman Conyers?
All right. Let's see. Historic Preservation Committee, they have created a draft ordinance for forming a Historic Preservation Commission, which is the whole goal of the Historic Preservation Committee, is to determine whether or not we need a Historic Preservation Commission. So I have circulated that draft ordinance around just for review, and after you've had an opportunity to review it, not for discussion, but we can look at getting that on a work session agenda to discuss. Environmental Advisory Board, the last couple of meetings, I think they actually wound up being slightly short of a quorum. There's some potential transition in membership of that committee going on right now, but we've had lots of, I guess, one-off conversations with individual members of the Environmental Advisory Board who, you know, had been asking about the DIAS triangle and conservation. So I know they would like to be involved, or at least kept up to speed on that. And then Library Board, they're on the agenda tonight, and I think that's, let's see, item number, item number eight. And I think that that's something that's been on their radar for quite a while, so they're very excited about that opportunity, and they may have some folks here to speak about that later. That's it.
Thanks, sir. No updates. Kevin?
Well, we're going to have a personal board on 18, we didn't have any actual items to comment on, so we're going to meet there. And you just heard the item number, the Harbor Board, which I suggested, for the budget purposes, for the money, you may have to wait the next budget cycle. So if there's further information, you're probably, I think, you might work that all through best.
Okay. And I don't have any updates tonight, so we'll transition into Department Head updates, grant updates.
Okay. And I don't have any updates tonight, so we'll transition into department head updates, grant updates. I don't, if I can call you out by name, anybody that wants to come up and say something, it's your option.
Just a, you know, a couple that are grant-related projects. On tonight's agenda, you do have the sub-recipient grant agreement with the BP Restore Act, bucket one, and that is, we now have a project number, and now we have money that's officially, as long as we sign and approve the agreement. We are in the midway process of selecting the design team. We went, the committee that y'all appointed went through the first pass, and now we're calling in for interviews starting on Friday. And hopefully, our goal is no later than the second meeting in August to have a recommendation to council for a firm to be selected, as well as you will have the recommendation for the grant administrator. That RFP was a little bit easier, we had one respondent, and it just happened to be the folks that we already have under contract for grant administration, so I think we've got a good relationship there. Last meeting, you approved the two TAP grants. We're having pre-construction meetings this week, and one of the contractors wants to get started a week from today, on the 29th, so we're excited about that. Just, we do have the North Mobile Drainage Project on tonight's agenda, and the downtown traffic congestion safety is out for advertisement, as well as relating to what we just spoke about, we do have the bulkhead repairs and improvements at Fairhope docks out for advertisement, so you'll be seeing those in the August meeting. Do want to make you aware of, and I think you've seen, all of you have seen some email traffic, I know just by coincidence, Mr. Boone and I went out and looked at a few sites on Pecan Avenue before, a little tropical event that we had. We've got some systematic drainage problems out there, and as I probably stated in my responses, some of them are, well, a lot of them are self-created by development, redeveloping lots that where there was traditional drainage, that somebody thought it was a great place to put a garage, and, you know, water tends to want to keep going where water has historically gone. But that is part of the challenge of an established area that's going through redevelopment. You know, here is a reality that we've got to account for from a public works standpoint, is if, you know, the house that is replacing the house that was torn down has 50% more rooftop or impervious surface, you're correlating 50% more running off forever practically. So when folks say, well, it used to not be that much water coming through, that doesn't mean that the rainfall data has really changed. It means the runoff coefficient of impervious to pervious surface has changed, and that's definitely changing in our older areas of town and everything else. And, you know, we have abilities to evaluate, and I am looking at Pecan Avenue as holistic, as well as spot areas. There are some small things that can be done to give relief, but ultimately, some bigger things may have to be considered, and we're going to bring you back some options and discuss what the systematic way to hopefully address that, because it is from almost to the top of the hill to the bottom of the hill, there are several areas of problems, and frankly, they're not going to get better, they're just not, because we now have new existing conditions there. But I do wanted you to hear this, as well as those that may be listening, watching, you know, we're cognizant, we, you know, if I had the ability to stop water from running through somebody's backyard, I'd already snapped my fingers and done that. It doesn't work that simply, but we are listening, we are talking, we are looking for ways to make the situation better, and it can be done. But as Richard Peterson likes to say, sometimes it takes a little time, and sometimes it takes a little money, and sometimes it takes both. But I did want to make you aware that that's an area that has some repeated complaints that are relatively new, and we are trying to address it. The other thing to keep in mind, on Friday, it appears that we're going to take ownership of the K-1 Center. That means that it leaves from a mowing and building maintenance, and when I say building maintenance, kind of a campus security standpoint, that's going to fall on public works. We'll kind of keep you updated on what level of impact that has on our current, you know, horticulture and landscape mowing staff. And, you know, we want to keep it, even though it may not be in a functioning use, we want to keep it looking as attractive as we can, so we'll kind of keep you abreast of that. And at this point in time, we're not proposing or anticipating any budget impact, but a year from now, when we've had it for a year, we probably can better define if we need to add a mower or something like that. But that's what's going on in public works, and we're just going to keep trudging along. So thank you. Any questions?
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you, Ed.
Okay, so I wanted to let you guys know that the Farmers Market's spring/summer season concluded last week. It was very successful. And Glow in the Park is this Thursday, rescheduled from tropical storm weather a couple of weeks ago, at 8:00 PM at Fairhopeers Community Park, sponsored by the city and the Downtown Fairhope Business Association. Lego Two is the movie, so it should be a pretty great night, especially with this little bit of a cold snap we've got coming. And I wanted to give a major kudos to Paige Crawford for making these events so successful and look so effortless. They aren't effortless, but it's her hard work and her dedication that makes it that way for us, so we're really, really proud of her. And then also, I wanted to mention that the 125th anniversary is this year. We're doing that a little bit differently than we have previously looked at things. We are going to look at the history of Fairhope, but we're also going to look at where we are today, and where our citizens are today. So we're asking citizens to submit their stories, their Fairhope stories, to us, in 300 words or less, with a photo if they'd like. We're running that on our website, so at fairhopeal.gov, in the front page, you'll see 125th anniversary. Click on that, and you can start to see stories populate from our citizens. We'd love to have anybody's story of Fairhope. We've actually had people from Birmingham and from out of state reach out to us and say, hey, can we give you our Fairhope story? We know we don't live there. We've said yes, because it's pretty interesting to see those perspectives. It's a really great snapshot of where our community is right now. So I would also encourage all of you, we would love to have your Fairhope stories, to really enter into that, and maybe in 25 years or 50 years, somebody can open that back up and look at it and say, hey, this is pretty cool. So that's it. Thank you.
I don't have any agenda items for you today, but two brief announcements for you. One, I wanted to advise the council, Hunter Simmons will be starting a week from today as our City of Fairhope Planning and Zoning Department. He will be the Planning and Zoning Manager, so we look forward to welcoming him next week. And he has the fortunate, he's fortunate that he's starting on one of those rare five Monday months where we have an entire Monday with no meetings. So we'll welcome him aboard next week. And just remind the council and everyone that prior to the August 5th Planning Commission meeting, we will have a Planning Commission work session to discuss the Greeno Road corridor overlay. So we'll have about one hour to go through it in great detail. Then we will have, that same item will be the first item on the agenda of the regular meeting, and so we will ask the chairman of the, we'll ask the chairman of the Planning Commission to allow a period of public involvement, not a public hearing, but a public involvement period of time, to pose questions and comments regarding the overlay. So thank you, council, for letting me make these two announcements.
Thanks, sir.
And you also went into a little bit more detail during the director roundtable, and did, went through the slideshow, which is available online right now. If you go to the Planning Department, and you can look at the whole slideshow.
Yes, and thank you, mayor. And so, under the city's website, so, and we'll, I'll just step everyone through, under the city's website, under Departments, if you look at Planning and Development Services, and then if you go to Planning and Zoning, and some of the spaces allow you to go directly to it, but the way to find it is to look for the Planning and Zoning, specifically look for Planning Commission, and there will be a view agendas, a view agenda in minutes. The work session has a standalone section, so that way it can be easily, more easily found. And also, the slideshow that we'll present during that meeting, a draft of that slideshow is already posted for anyone that would like to see it prior to the meeting. And so that can be downloaded. Because the meeting agendas tend to be quite lengthy and are difficult to download, we want to make a standalone item to be easier to find.
When did you say the date and time of the work session meeting?
Yes, sir, councilman, that will be Monday, August 5th. Then the regular meeting starts at 5:00 PM. We'll have a work session beginning at 4:00 PM.
Welcome.
Good evening. I've been working with our local banks on getting some interest. So when I came in, that was one of the first things I started looking at, is all our bank accounts, and we had half our reserve was in one bank that was put out as a RFP in 14 at 60 basis points. It just could be that the turnover, nobody really looked at that, and so that was one thing that, you know, I looked at. Our operating accounts were at BBVA Compass, and I was able to negotiate with them to give that interest rate up. What they were doing was just waiving fees, and so what I got in place now is we're getting paid 2.25% on the funds. And then I set, part of the rules is they're setting aside $2 million in a non-interest-bearing account, which offsets the fees. The fees are running about $45,000 a year, so that balances out. And then the reserves that I put out for quotes, I got Centennial Bank had the best offer at 91, excuse me, 91-day T-bill plus 20 basis points. And as of the rates last Monday, it was right at 2.31, and they put a floor in there, and that's really, this market right now is hard to get a floor, but they put a floor of 210. So if rates go down any, which that's where some of the bankers are thinking, the lowest we'll go is, over the next three years, is 210. So the net effect is going to be about half a million dollars in interest earning that I'm putting in the budget for next year. So I've been working on these kind of things. I'm just trying to find little things, and to me, our money is low-hanging fruit. What we can do with that is to be able to buy police cars or employees, and it's going to be...
Kim, I think that's fantastic. That's a lot of money. I mean, low-hanging fruit, but half a million dollars is a huge amount. So well done.
Yes, indeed. Add a girl.
Tough act to follow, right?
And I've got just the place to spend it. I know you can't do anything about time, but money-wise, no kidding, really, the next budget cycle, we're going to try to promote more personnel, we're going to try to get some expertise, and we need that. But the, Barry, you know, came through, we had a pretty significant rain event, we reported close to 250,000 gallons of overflow in the system, and it was throughout. We're doing some smoke testing, trying to be pretty aggressive in a couple of areas where we wouldn't have anticipated that much flow to start with, but there are some manholes that we have found that have some breaches within them that we think the water was well above, and caused some obvious problems. And we go through those locations and try to seal those up, and we make, eliminate or do some pipe bursting or something like that to eliminate manholes out there altogether, but we're still evaluating all that, we're working on it. And we feel like, you know, some of the side-stream storage projects would have helped offset some of those issues. We feel like, you know, additional personnel would help give us an opportunity to evaluate these systems quicker and in a more, you know, expedient manner, but those are the issues that will come up during the budget process, and we'll look toward, see how we feel about all that. But anyway, do y'all have any questions?
I've got one.
Yes?
Concerned of sewer spills.
Right.
I had recently. What's going on, nobody's being notified that there's a spill. The SCADA system and everything, we have a place that's supposed to be a notification system. This is the third one, as I recall, and nobody's being notified, they just keep running because nobody knows about it. I can understand a problem, and what I don't understand is why the notification system's not being done. When those high water levels hit, somebody needs to be notified, so that we can get something done to bypass that system.
Which notification process are you talking about?
You're talking about the citizen?
I'm talking about the lift station that overflowed.
Right.
It was overwhelmed because the pumps went down.
Well, one of them, the Twin Beach one in that example, the transducer floated with grease and other material that was caught up into it, and it just didn't even ask the pump to come on, much less alarm anybody. The control system was active, it just was inactive due to what was caught up in the components that controlled the wet well level to start with.
So what, do we have a plan, so that's not going to be a problem?
Yeah, the people we're going to hire to better manage these things are going to give us the support that we need to monitor that better. And I'd be happy to start hiring now, if that's okay with y'all, but we need more expertise to be able to, you know, 80 lift stations in the system, somebody needs to go look at these things. We've got one electrician, we've got one pump guy, I mean, it's just, we need more depth, and it's not something we hadn't mentioned before, but, you know, we just need more depth, and we're happy to do that. But if we got to go, and this is part of the whole process, and I'm not down in anything, I know the processes are set up for municipalities because this is the way they operate, but when you have to get Personnel Board to approve a position and a gap, and then you get Council to approve the whole thing again, and then you go out, I mean, it is a process that is time-consuming, on top of the other processes that are already time-consuming, that involve procurement. And it's very difficult, shorthand it is, everybody is, and I'm not, I mean, I'm doing the best I can, and I think everybody in every department is doing the best they can. But we add these layers of bureaucracy to an already thin employee base, and either we add to the employee base, or we remove some of the bureaucracy that creates the problem that we find in getting anything done quickly. That's just my opinion.
Go ahead and mention, too, that it's not, and this is what we're going to do with Alabama Coastal. Richard Peterson can speak better to this, but the percentage of kind of, not fault, but I mean, the city obviously has its, you know, work to do in our sewer system, but it's also the awareness campaign that we're going to try to do a lot better with...
And that will be, you know, pouring grease down the drain and flushing flushable wipes, which is kind of oxymoron in terms of it really isn't what you want to do, but they say you can flush them, so people flush them, and they're hard to tear apart, they're rough on pumps, and they're difficult. To answer your question about the SCADA, though, we did put in SCADA some maintenance alarm capability, where if a pump doesn't come on in 30 minutes, and it usually comes on every 15, they'll be in alarm, whether the float system works or not.
That's what I was going to ask you after all...
Yeah, well, I knew you were, and that's why I brought it up to you, because that's what we're doing, and we've changed that with the new style.
Is that the all 80 stations, or just a few of the stations?
I don't know, and Jay may know more, but I know Jeremy was working on some of that yesterday, but the Mission folks, the new systems we got, they went across the board and did that. I don't know about our surveillance.
Yeah, we're trying to get with surveillance to see if they can do it, too. Like Richard said, this was a calamity, monumental bad time, and we had a gentleman who knows us walk by at the very start, and he never called us. We had a red light on, people were driving by, and they never called us. We didn't get a call out because the transducer broke and fell, and said that things, everything was all right. So when we talked to Mission, we asked them, you know, that's the one that I asked you for. We said, if there's a way to, you know, turn the pumps on and get an alarm, if we don't turn the pumps on, they said, yes, we've already enacted that. We did that the last two days. Twin Beach is done, Country Woods is done, South Sector Street is on surveillance, we've asked them if they can do it, they're going to let us know if they can do it. If we have just an unbelievable failure where nobody gets alarmed out, we should at least know that the pumps haven't ran, and that would have helped us tremendously in Twin Beach.
The question, you said the light was on?
Yeah, the light was on when they got there.
That's created by the transducer flipping on.
No, it's a backup float. The transducer said, we have backup...
The ball flips up to turn the light on for a high water level.
Right. What happened was...
It turns up, there's no alarm that sets off. When that light turns on, there's no alarm.
No, the...
The light is the alarm.
The light represents a high level.
The light is the alarm.
And that's the only one.
I think so.
No, it's not. We have, we have, we have seven points that we monitor, high water, low water, electrical outlet, base monitor outlet, and now power, and there's two more I'm going to pick up, if it's not being used. So when, we have a backup float system that's going to be, is designed to be used if everything else fails. It comes on and tells us that there's alarm, but it was wrapped up in the whole thing. With Barry, all the rags that came in the Twin Beach, it's a relatively small station, it collapsed, and we had a guy there earlier that morning at 9:00, it was no problem. He looked at the wet well... thing. With Barry, all the rags that came in the Twin Beach, it's a relatively small station, it collapsed there. We had a guy there earlier that morning at nine o'clock that jumped out. He looked in the wet well, there's no problem. And then all of a sudden, there was so much weight on there. It took us, Kevin, the Councilman Boone, it took us about an hour and a half just to cut the rags off the transducer. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
And it took us about an hour and a half just to cut the rags off the transducer. It weighed almost 180 pounds. It took people, two people to pull it out. So what we did was, is we bought a new system, a new transducer that sits above everything. It's a radar. So it's just completely out of the water. So the rags weren't affected anymore. We put it on about five or six of the new stations. It's not, it's not cheap, but at this, we'll pay almost anything. It's almost double the price of a normal transducer. So I, you know, there's going to be times where we have an overflow. There's going to be times where there's vandalism. We've had people put Armadillos down the manhole. We've had people put other things down the manhole. And, and, you know, we respond to as quick as possible.
I understand that.
And, and as far as lift stations go, all of our lift stations that are new, we have wiring diagram. But our older lift stations, we don't have a wiring diagram for because they were put together by people of the city. And so when we do these things, we hope, we test everything we can, and we hope that it's going to work. But there's always going to be something that we don't see and we learn from it. And we try to respond to it. And we try to make sure that it doesn't happen again. Much like the fuses that happened before. We have one fuse that, that killed us, as we all know at the Woodlands. And we eliminated that immediately. But we had no way of knowing that fuses were going to kill us because we didn't have a wiring diagram for us to tell us that that's what it was going to be. So now, we, we put backup floats and every, every one we had out there, we, you know, I, I think we've gone above and beyond, but there's still things just like this. If we'd have known that at runtime it was going to be an issue. There's been a ton of changes. And you guys have done a tremendous job allowing us, you know, to spend the money that we spent so far. You know, nobody feels worse about a spill than I do. I take it very personally.
But I do want to add, just so, you know, that, that half of it is a result of the city and what we need to do. And we're going to definitely beef up personnel this 2020 cycle. But half of it is caused by folks draining their, their floods through these.
People that caused damage to our system that we, like a manhole lifted up behind.
That's the part that we have to do awareness.
Smoke is a port right.
Right. I mean, so it's both. We've got to do both.
Well, and that's, and that's the frustrating part for, I think, for us. And I don't want to speak for everybody, but for me, when you, when you get the calls about another sewer overflow, everybody, everybody says it's the same thing. It's the evil out development and development calls. And that, and that's not.
They've been, they've been going on a very long time. But we actually report them now.
Yeah.
Every known is reported.
All right. Well, the thing is, is to speak directly to that, it, it certainly strains the system because we didn't do anything before, you know, the current administration and the current council has allowed us to spend this money. I mean, before that, we begged for money all the time. And, you know, and I understood there's, there's, there's a give and take to every situation. So I'm appreciative of what you've done. As a matter of fact, I just wanted to remind everybody that the new pump line is going to be out for bid on Thursday. And so we should get a stick of shock on that. But that's going to help with the bottlenecking that we're experiencing now in other locations. And once we get some bottlenecking out of town, you know, we can be more efficient. We can have some whole time out where we are. And plus, we really need to work hard on getting these storage tanks installed. Because that, instead of overflowing, that would have fed directly back into one of those tanks. And we would have had a second alarm tell us, hey, just let you know, this is fully on. So, you know, hopefully we can get going with that as soon as possible.
Well, and, and I appreciate that, Jay, and Richard too. And I know that, you know, I mean, this is something that takes time. I mean, it, it's, it's a big project.
A five-year process.
Takes a long time to get done, especially when you have as much to do as we do. You know, the biggest critic I've got is, is, she lives with me at my house, and every time we, one of these is reported, she goes, what are you doing? You know, I mean, why, how did you let this happen again?
Well, let me say this.
And I say, we're fixing it. We're doing it. It just, it takes time.
If we could just take a, if we just take a breath and think about this. When I first started working here 17 years ago, we literally could get a half an inch of invalid overflow for hours. Now, I didn't, it's, it's not the answer, but the progress is being made because as Richard witnessed himself, we didn't have any overflow anywhere until the last bid. We were raining for almost 24 hours before we had any overflow. So we are making progress.
And, and we reduced the overflow.
We're looking for it. But the goal's being met and, and things are changing. It's unfortunate that where we run over, a lot of times it's in the same areas. And, you know, and, and keep in mind that, you know, there, people have been in here longer than I have. And so they know if their yard starts backing up, they can pull their cleaning out. And I can't stop that. And then by the time I get out there, it's slow chested, you're never going to find it. But we can do the best we can do. And, and we're going to do a couple more things over in the valley area. We're going to do, we have lined the pipes, we've done the manholes, and now we're going to go on a separate thing where we start lining the laddles. Because a lot of the laddles are homemade, as, as you've probably seen before.
Probably right.
And, and so, and so we'll go up so many feet and that will keep, I mean, we can go down there now, we can see water coming in a lot of the laddles. You know, but the main lines are not having, and, you know, if you take a garden hose and you put 10 gallons here, and 10 gallons here, and 10 gallons here, and I'm already at capacity, eventually I'm going to throw it in the open. One last thing, unless you have a question for me. Item 20 is actually on your agenda. We'd be reimbursed for that.
Okay.
So.
Also want to mention too, that we've, we've done a real, I think, good job thanks to, you know, the internal help of updating all the progress on our website. It's under Frequently Asked Questions, front page of the website. When you click Frequently Asked Questions, there's one for what are we doing to upgrade our sewer system? I mean, it's extensive. I mean, there's a lot of different things that we're doing. And then also, there is a, an article on the things that we're doing to improve the health of Mobile Bay. So when you look at all of this, you're going to be shocked at what has been done in just a few years.
And I'll say this, Hunter Roberts, you've got some comments, but I would like to say that I did see something you put out explaining what's going on. And I saw something Robert put out. And I think that both of those were very helpful in explaining sort of what's going on, what's being done to help, what the sources of some of these overflows are. And, and I think what I try to explain, at least at home, when someone will listen, is that, you know, it, it, even if we redo it all, that doesn't mean that there will never be another overflow. There are always.
Absolute.
Especially, like we just said, 50% of it is caused by unfortunately citizens that maybe not, don't know that you can't leave your storm drains out or your, your sewer.
I think they know. I think they just don't want to get caught.
Well, you said one of them was actually designed to go right into it.
Oh, yeah.
So I mean, you think they knew?
Yeah. I was going to say, my question is, right now, there's no penalties for private sector. Is that correct?
Well.
Messing around with the sewer system, basically, for lack of better.
Well, what we do is, is we've had situations where, in one particular instance, I'll just use it for example, they put the rabbit pellets, you know, they're in kitty litter. They put it down there. And of course, it was dry when they put it in, it swelled up. And we couldn't get it to move at all. We charged them for that repair. We charged them to repair the yard. And there's a shock value in that. I will say this, in the past, we've tried to charge them. And, you know, it becomes a political thing that we bounce back and forth because people say they can't pay it. Who do we charge? Who do we not charge? And if we're going to do something hard and fast, and we do, we'll, we'll charge people for the repairs. There was one in, in White Grove that would have been upwards of about $11,000. They put an Armadillo down there. And by the time we dug up everything, replaced everything, we were out almost $11,000. And we're going to charge a citizen that much?
What I think Kevin's talking about is a penalty for a fine for.
We don't have that. That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm trying to say. We don't have that.
You hook up your roof drain system to the sewer system.
Right.
And when you smoke it, your house looks like it's on fire.
Yeah.
That type of thing.
Yeah, we do not have, that's what I'm saying. The only thing we can do right now.
That to me, I mean, obviously you can't, you can't do everything. Like you said, I go out there in the middle of the rain and pull the plug and then put it back. When it's over, I'm going to have a real hard time finding that cap. But I mean, if you want the sewer overflow, keep up the good work.
That's vandalism to a certain degree.
And we do run into it.
There's their fault. And their vandalism assistance to it. But my, you know, my deal, I don't know if it would help or not to initiate, you know, rules respecting our ordinances.
We've started before.
To eliminate, or get the, I like my people to basically.
Yeah, when Dan was here.
You don't want to be messing around.
When Dan was here, when we were early on, started.
I noticed they quit cutting trees down when you fined them $10,000.
Yeah.
Cut that tree down on the evening because I didn't like it.
Yeah. We had a lot more support.
We got a lot more people that think a little harder on cutting that tree down. I did.
Yeah, I guess.
Thank you.
Well, we're involved with the Utilities United Group, and, and we have a meeting actually tomorrow morning. And I think the discussion of how do you approach private citizens causing problems with sewer inflows has been talked more than once. And, and, you know, we, we do need to put together some type of ordinance and penalty for doing that. And, and, you know, and I'm all about forgiveness anyway. So, you know, I won't have a problem with something, I think the habitual offender is the one we want to make the example out of.
It can be an escalating penalty. You know, because we don't, like Jay said, we don't want to, we don't want to put something out there that we don't can't pay.
And people have a manhole in their front yard that don't realize that they've run over it enough times to where it's shoved off just enough to be a problem. I mean, they're not going to know.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it would be a.
The second time they will.
We have sewer court. You could be the judge, Jay. Sewer court? Yeah, right, sewer court. No, so, yeah, serious question. So who came up with the, the fix for the lift station at Twin Beach?
I think it was, I think it was three of us. Us, Roscoe, and, and Richard.
And how many other lift stations?
Everyone that's on Mission. Now, you guys were grateful enough to give us 12 lift stations on Mission.
So those 12 have been modified to do
Yes.
what the Twin Beach now.
Yeah. I've, I've been getting the pages at night for them, just to make sure.
I don't know if it'd be cheaper to put a camera on every one of them, have some big screens.
And.
Monitor somewhere.
Jeff is actually looking into that.
All that. It's still, you see, are you looking on the ground, see the overflow? Boone, you have somebody there?
I mean, yeah, monitoring that would be problematic in itself with 80 lift, I mean, you're not going to have somebody.
It'd be less time to go out for each one.
There. You're not going to sit 24 hours and not see it.
Yeah. And so my next question, now, Richard, we've talked about that in the budget process, about adding personnel and Engineering Department and all that. You know, if there's any way to outsource any of this to a, you know, a company to come in and do any of this additional rehab study or, or anything, you know, I think the council would be more in favor of that.
Well, we can up the, the amounts that we contract with on an annual basis for point repair and, and, you know, pipe lining, manhole lining.
Yeah. Cause I don't think anybody's expecting, you know, the, the sewer department to make all these repairs and.
No, and we're not anticipating making the repairs, but we are anticipating finding root causes of problems that we, we, we can then point the repair in the right direction. You know, the, the repair folks are there to, to listen to what we want to have lined or, or rehabilitated. And, and they're, you know, waiting for us to be able to, that's why we got the camera truck. And, you know, there's only so much time today, and there's so many lines you can look at in a day. But just to give you an example of, of what, you know, takes a lot of time during the, the, the three weeks that Rock Creek had the one main line that was washed out. I think we responded to 15 other water leaks during that three week timeframe. And, you know, wears people out. And at one point in time, and I don't know if it was a Thursday or a Friday, but there were three people that could respond to an emergency available. Which, I mean, you know, it's just, there's no doubt that, and we, we're going to have to contract out most of rehabilitation work. But, but it's the, the proactive maintenance and the, the identification of issues to get these maintenance projects.
And technical support.
To do the most we can with the money we spend is the key to it.
Absolutely.
And you got to look at all of it to be able to do that. Or you got to sense it from lift stations that have high alarm during wet weather, that you wonder where, why, why would that new subdivision have a problem? And why would that lift station be high? And then you got to go look for it. But you got to have people. You got to have, you know, technicians that understand how those things work and can identify that. Jay, your wife interested in a grade three water certificate?
She might be.
Well, we.
I know better than to speak.
Ask her to come talk to him. Put her to work. Anyway, that's, I mean, that is what, what we're faced with. Anything else?
Thank you.
Good to be back after 11 days off. Just a couple of things. We've got a couple of things on the agenda for the breakers and regulators to disregard those bids and then go out for quotes. And that's after talking to the treasurer and the city attorney and their recommendations for that. Then I want to give you guys just an update. I'm going to have, not this meeting, but next meeting, agenda item for our, the design work for the new Morphe substation if we choose to go forward. But I can't present that to the citizens unless we have some of the design work done so that they know what they're looking at. And so that's going to be probably 100,000 added to Stewart Engineering's five year contract. So I just wanted to give you guys a briefing on that one. Well, if anything else seems to be going okay, we, the system held up pretty well through the hot spells.
Morphe or Nichols?
Um, this will be the new one behind the ABC store. Nichols is designed.
Okay.
And we closed on that land. But I want to do a public forum either in the fall or the spring, but people need to know what, what we're doing. And so I need to have that design work done. So we're not proposing adding the construction cost in until we get the final okay from y'all. But I need some of the design work done. And that'll be the next council meeting. Any other questions for Electric? Thanks.
We'll let you shout from the back, Dave, if you want.
They told me to walk out, so.
Anybody else? All right, no takers. We'll go into the, looking at the agenda, going through here. Number five is the ordinance for sleeping in vehicles. Chief, you'll be here for that for any questions. Number six is, I think, the working waterfront project, which will be here. Next is police, police's application for a community grant. Jessica, chief, is that going to be one of y'all answering questions, chief? Eight is the library. I don't know whether anybody has talked about that, but in case we do. And nine is city authorizes mayor executed 311 service level agreement. What is a 311 service agreement?
This is for.
311, I guess.
Right. Is Jeff here to, to talk about that? I know he talked to me about it.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, you said which, which item number?
Number nine, 311.
I don't know the law.
What's the code before you did?
There we go.
911.
This is the information.
I know what 911 is.
Yeah, this is just for information.
All right. Well, we'll say Jeff is going to talk about nine and 10.
Yeah. It's, looks like it's cell phone.
Eleven is approval of more surveying for professional engineering for Young Street Community Park. Twelve is the approval of selection of paint pipeline services for professional engineering for national, natural gas distribution pipeline compliance.
Terry.
Yeah, 13, go to Milton K. Wood about architecture services for jail doors replacement. Seems pretty important.
Thank you.
All right. Fourteen and fifteen are bid rejections that we just heard about. Sixteen is rejecting bid for reinforced concrete pipe and pump works.
And let me just kind of give a heads up. So we want to talk about revenue. We only got one response. This is our annual renewal contract, and it went up about 33%. And I just think that we can do better to sit down. Worst case, we're going to come back to the same price as it did. But, but hopefully we can get closer to what we were paying. And we're buying enough concrete pipe on a yearly basis to make the work there for time. So that's why if the base doesn't last for 33%, it's going to be a high overall increase.
Okay, thank you. And just for the record, Kevin has informed me that 311 is for non-emergency city issues, graffiti, city information, you know, lawyers, that sort of thing. All right, lawyers could be emergency, I don't know. All right, number 17 is tobacco trailer. Pickleball courts. I didn't see Tom here.
Tom's here.
All right, perfect. Oh, 19, North Mobile Street drainage improvement. Superstar name. Twenty is the city favorable roof improvement of eight inch, inch to valve. Lancer?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry. Twenty one is the rental, new rental facility assistant. Okay. And the replacement roof for justice.